Not only do we have the CEO Greg Woodsmall of Elizabeth River Crossing just to tell us what, how they're gearing up, and John Andrews is here as well with a number of veterans who are here. So, we're glad to have all of you here, honored to have you here really. Appreciate your willingness Tom and everyone that served on the Veterans Advisory Committee. We'll be getting some update on that here in a few minutes. So, we do have an ordinance a little later on actually naming the members of the Commission and the Veterans Advisory Commission and the Military Economic Development Commission. And we got a couple of recommendations from members of council and all of them have been included on the, on the board, so that's helpful. So, Mr. Jones, would you like to begin?
Sure. And Mayor and council, I didn't know if you wanted to go directly with our guests. I did have one quick announcement down, turn it back over to you. I did want to mention the meet greet and imagine on Friday night, a little gathering that occurred that I will tell you that in terms of positive feedback, it's almost universal. So, I just want to thank, you know, all those-
There's qualifications in there, Greg.
Some qualifications? I do want to thank the staff, you know, Lori Crouch and Sarah Parker and everybody who, you know, made it happen. Again, the positive feedback that we've heard up to this point is, you know, when is it going to occur again? So, it's just really rewarding, refreshing when you have an opportunity to get people together for one, a single purpose. So, I did want to mention that.
Yeah, and I know, I guess several of us were out there as well. And Marcus, I think it was a great credit to the staff, Lori, you and the way it was managed. Not a lot of resources really, you know, put towards this effort, but a lot of enthusiasm. And there were thousands of people, I mean thousands. And it's always nice to sort of get overwhelmed like that with, but the thing is, is grown, it's bigger than us in the sense, there are some people out there who really taken, especially a lot of young folks, have taken ownership of Granby Street and of downtown. And so, I think we ought to do it more than once and we ought to do it, and maybe the council that had set a retreat to talk a little bit, or maybe we could just toss it into a committee, do it at least twice a year, maybe more. And, you know, I wouldn't burden Lori with doing it every time, but ought to go into a, some sort of special events category where the timing of it is appropriate. But I think you could have a lot of goodwill by getting some young people on the committee, some of those folks who showed up who were enthusiastic about it. Maybe get some of the old hacks like me out of the way and let people, I mean, you know, and let them do their thing and just, you know, see how nice it can get. I know on Facebook, there were a number of suggestions and, so anyway, I mean, the crowd was very young at times, it was old, I mean, it was diverse, I mean, it was you name it, it was wonderful. People from all over, down there, so. Anyway, it's something you can build on for sure. I don't know if anybody wants to add to that, but I-
I was thinking a holiday type festival would be absolutely fantastic, like maybe the week after the grand illumination and hot apple cider and hot chocolate and Santa and all that up and down Granby Street. I think that would be great.
Chestnuts.
Chestnuts, the whole nine, you know? Old lady in the shoe, I mean, whatever.
We got alcohol.
Lori, can you give fake snow to the blow? Well, you could do a Beale Street type of thing, I mean, we don't earn, so anyway. Okay, well, why don't we do real quickly council interests and see if there's anything that's, we need to get on the table here. So, Mr. Reddick?
Yeah. Actually, the council interest I have, I'd like for us to maybe have some further discussions at the retreat. And what it has to do is with truck traffic on Hampton Boulevard. Those of you who were here remember that right after Isabel and they closed the Midtown Tunnel and the trucks had to go 564 to make their way, you know, to Portsmouth. I suggested that we get the truck traffic off of Hampton Boulevard at that time. My major concern is, is safety as well as any ancillary effects. And when I say safety, we have been forced to move baseball from Fleet Park because of safety. We've been asked to move the Eagles from Botanical Gardens because of safety. And both of those were because of federal directional mandate. Yet, we continue to allow the traffic, the truck traffic to come down Hampton Boulevard and from 2:45 until 4 o'clock. That's probably one of the most dangerous stretches there is because these truck drivers are trying to get to the tunnel before 4:00 P.M. Now, we had a, we have a, had a truck to overturn a year ago up by Lockmouth. And all we need is for one of our schoolchildren, ODU student, a pedestrian, or just a motorist to be killed because of truck traffic. And one of the other things that made me think about this, and Marcus, I hope you can maybe pull something together for the retreat, is the ancillary effects of truck traffic. I was surprised riding down North Shore Road in Lockhaven to see as many for sale signs that I've seen. And I don't know whether that's directly having anything to do with truck traffic on Hampton Boulevard or not, but it's just alarming to see the number of for sale signs that we have in what I would consider our really, you know, great neighborhoods. And so, I just think we need to take a hard look and plus the entire industry has changed. Possibility of the port being sold and, and the effects that that might have, if it's sold, it's going to be sold to a foreign company, country, you know, or company. So, I just think we need to have a hard talk about truck traffic on Hampton Boulevard. Nobody over there can vote for me. Ward Ford doesn't go anywhere near Hampton Boulevard, you know? My concern is purely about the safety of Hampton Boulevard and, and what an effect it has on our city.
What Ontario vessels would then, what they utilize?
Just they stay right on, what's that, what's that? And, and they wouldn't come down into, when I say Hampton, they wouldn't have tidewater drive, they wouldn't have any of our surface streets. When we get them off Hampton, we're going to get them off all of our surface streets and it'll be 564 to however they get to Portsmouth without coming down on our streets. No, I wasn't talking about-
We can get a presentation for you, especially about-
Yeah, we're talking about giving up tidewater drive, you know, for Hampton, you know? Hampton Boulevard is, you know, while I'm concerned about safety of Hampton Boulevard, all of our streets will be put, you know, in peril if we decided to close Hampton and let them go tidewater however way it would be to get there. And we just have to take a hard stand. And when this port closes, I mean, when they sell this port, there's no telling what's going to happen. When we woke up and Ford Motor Company left, we had no idea, you know? And with 2014, the Panama Canal, and you have Charleston and Savannah and all of these other ports that don't have deep water like we have, who are now talking to the environmental groups about getting, you know, deep water. And what I'm talking about is not going to happen next week or next year, but we have to look to maybe 2020, you know, and look for, look out for Norfolk now.
There are ways to solve it, but I mean, I think we are all talking about it.
Right.
Okay, I agree. All right, Mr. Reddick?
Dovetail, and meanwhile, we do need to be enforcing the ordinances that we have at the 4 o'clock. We backslide on that some. Two quick things, I would like at the retreat for us to discuss how we can be the easiest or best place for a new company to move to our city or start up in our city. I know we're working on some things downtown, but we still, I still get a lot of frustration from people that there are a lot of hoops they have to jump through. I think we need to have at least the least frustrating city to do business and we ought to, we ought to be faster, easier, not quite as many hoops to jump through, not sacrificing quality, you know, things that are important. But I would like to talk about that at the retreat. The other thing is, I'm proxying here for Mr. Protegiro, but do we have money, matching money for spay neuter program? I'm getting a lot of emails and they've indicated to me that he had, you put in the budget for some spay neuter money or not. Is anybody else getting those emails?
I've been on it.
I think we have matching funds available.
Right, and the time's running out to use them and I'm just trying to find out, and Andy's not here, so I'm just-
I think one of the things they've argued is that we supported a resolution, I think, for, for this and in order for them to get the matching funds the city has to match us.
Is it totally some in the budget or is it this or this or this?
No, what occurs at the, at the end, make long story short, there's flexibility in the budget, I think it was $50,000. There would be flexibility in the budget when the matching funds would be required, even if it had to come from contingency. So, it wasn't going to be that there was an issue that we could not do it because of money.
Right, I think we're closing in on that time.
Right, they've got, they've got the grant, I think they just need the city's commitment on the other half so they can get the matching part.
We're doing T and R.
No, no, no. Spay neuter Hampton. Spay neuter.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Do we have funds?
Can we find out and get back to, we don't want to let this grant with the-
Right, and I think it's become more pressing too because some of the other organizations that had been working in Norfolk for spay and neuter had pulled out.
Yeah.
So, they are trying to offset some of the loss from that with this grant.
Didn't we actually at the very end of the budget meeting say something like that? Oh, okay, well, you'll look into it, let us know.
Yeah, I think there is some urgency here, so, that's all I have.
Mr. Burford?
Couple of things, uh, first, I don't know if any of you guys got calls as relates to the senior tax relief program, but, you know, I know it was not in transition yet, but it will be. But we have a number of seniors, 82, 76, 72, 75, that have been on that program 10 years, five years, 20 years, and this year somehow didn't make the cut. To me, that's unacceptable. You know, I, there's no way that, you know, a person 85, 86 years old that have enjoyed that privilege for 20 years legitimately, all of a sudden now don't, didn't get the paperwork in or whatever the case may be, but they're not getting the relief. And so, if it's a budgetary issue in that, that it has to come to this body, I think we, we need to do something in the interim until this program transitions over, until the city manager can get, totally get his arms around it. But I, I do believe that his staff is doing a great job in terms of trying to mitigate most of these issues, but if you are getting calls, I know I've gotten a lot of calls, they keep calling you council person and, you know, just telling the people that we ran out of money to you.
Yes, and that's not, and that's not the case.
That, that's unacceptable.
We have never, I mean, you have to put a number in your budget that you would estimate to be the amount of relief that's been given. And we have led the region in the amount of relief that we've given and into, we've even talked about, you know, the high limits that we set, the value of people, you know, how much they could have in personal value and so they're, but in any event, I think the manager and, you know, Anthony, you're very close to this because you, you get the calls in the charge of office too, I know. I'm not aware that the manager, as he's seeing them, that you're turning anybody away who's been helped in the past. There is a, there are deadlines that we expect people to live up to, but some people didn't have to live up to those deadlines in the past apparently, so there has to be some understanding about that.
If we didn't have a hard line in the past, then all of a sudden unless we give the-
I think you're right.
Notice that I, I think it would be premature on our behalf to-
Yeah, it wouldn't be fair.
To issue a hard line, it just, it wouldn't be fair.
And we want it.
Yeah, so, I mean, we may be in transition, there may be some growing pains, but I truly believe in terms of what the manager is doing, that in, in the coming years, we will, we will see a real cost savings in the program itself, the kind of measures he's taking. So, it may be a little painful getting through this, this part of it, but I think at the end of the day, we'll, we'll have a better process in place.
Right.
So, the other thing, just to kind of piggyback on what Barclay said, I mean, I got a call from a reporter today and about Clark Nixon leaving and possibly going to the town center. You know, an issue for me, not just Clark Nixon, but, you know, retention, you know, retaining good businesses in the city. That's a mark of a great city to be able to retain businesses. When people look at relocating in the cities, the first thing they want to know is what is the lifespan of a business, how long businesses have been in that, that particular city? So, when you have businesses that have been around 50 years, 100 years, it says a lot about the relationship that the city has with these businesses. And to add on to that, to, to grow businesses in the city our size is important. And we've lost some major businesses, some to our fault, some not to our fault, but we have to have a program in place where we can incentivize the growth, if we can incentivize new businesses coming in. We have to have a program where we can incentivize businesses that want to grow. If a business is going to add 50 to 100 new employees, that is to me, no different than a business coming in adding 25 new, new employees. And so, I just think that it's important that on the back end, that we have programs, and we have none to my knowledge, but we have to have a program to be able to retain and grow good businesses and always looking at how we can expand the footprint of businesses where we're moving into other desirable areas of the city or we're co-locating them in where they already are. Or if we need to incentivize them financially, understanding that when we, they, we lose them to other cities, we lose all of that revenue. And so, I would rather incentivize a business and explain to the tax company that, you know, although we're incentivizing this business, I want you to look at the potential growth, the jobs that we will grow and create as a result of keeping that business in this city opposed to letting that business go elsewhere. The other thing that I'm really concerned about is our ability to be able to work with existing businesses in this company. I think that the city can be a catalyst in terms of helping small businesses within the city. You know, the city is a machine in itself and we do a lot of different things. And at some point, from an economic development standpoint, we got to look at the vendors, the people that we do business with. And if we did take a scorecard and if we're doing business with more businesses outside of this city than we're doing inside of the city, then that's an issue. I know every, there's a, a, a process, procurement process that we have to go through. But again, if we're strengthening the businesses within the city, they can add employees, they can grow their base, and we get that tax revenue back. And so, that, that's something that, I mean, you know, at the retreat, I would hope that that's, that's one of those, those bullets that takes center stage that we need to talk about.
We can take a whole good portion of the talking about economic development, really, not only by making it more friendly as Barclay says to new business here, but how we retain and grow the businesses that are here, how we're more attractive. I mean, I really, we haven't revisited that in a long time. There are, you know, we have that grant program. I think we've actually in the past, rarely, when there's been a major expansion of an existing business, have actually used performance grants, but we haven't done it in a long, long time and I don't think we've even, we have to dust off the paper, bring it in here to everybody to understand that central.
And the same, same thing with downtown, we need to be a little more aggressive with the debt.
Yep.
That, those resources, I mean, that's what business improvement is, to improve the businesses in downtown, you know? And so, I just think we need to be a little more aggressive in trying to attract the types of businesses that we want to see in downtown. And it doesn't cost the taxpayers any more money. These are the people that are paying extra to live in that district. And so, we should be able to utilize that so they can get the benefit of that. If we're not doing that, then, you know, we're not, we're not doing what we're, we should be doing, I mean, doing as a whole, so. I just hope we talk about those things.
Angela, anything?
Um, two things. I just, the vice mayor hit on something that was important to me, the senior tax relief, and I talked to Ron earlier this week. I think part of the problem might have been, might have been the way the letter was just worded. It said, it started out with, if you haven't had any changes, you don't have to do anything. And so, nobody bred down to the part that says, but you do have to sign it and send it back that says you have, you know, you don't have any changes. But the calls that I've gotten, Ron is working on making sure that those individuals, you know, who are elderly, in their 70s, 80s, whatever, are able to get tax relief paid. I didn't get an indication that it was a budgetary issue, but it may be or whatever, but, you know, he's working on that. The second thing was, when people come into the city hall building, when you go over into the courthouse, they have large screens up, like, kind of like the ones we have here that have information about if you're going to this court or that court or the other court. And, I mean, it may seem kind of frivolous, but that, we don't have any, we don't have a person anymore in the information desk. And so, people come in and they kind of look around and they may not know where they're going, or they may not know where a general district is or circuit is, or they come in the other end of the building and if security's there, they're there, if they're, you know, on a break or whatever. Do we have any money to be able to possibly upgrade that board that has been there probably for as long as I've been alive?
Yeah. Well, I won't even look over to my right because I know Bob Badger's on the edge of his seat because-
He's on the edge of the air.
Because we've been working on revamping the first block that very purpose.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
You might ever need, okay.
Two things, one, looking through archives and also being lambasted with emails from the spay and neuter people. It's a $5,000 matching grant, so it's just 5,000, that's why. The other thing is, and I know you guys are getting hammered with Eagle emails, I'm not, so-
You're creating some of your own.
But I, what I wanted to do for you guys, just to give you real quick, and I, I know you probably get tired when we talk about this, but just a few things. One, the letter from the FAA recommended that we apply for the permit, it didn't mandate it, and we have a copy of that letter. We were doing what Wayne asked us to do, which was fine with it. The original request from the Eagle folks was to delay this for one year and look at some of the other options that were out there. So, what I did for you, because they've been sending a lot of emails with articles and links and things to it, I made some copies of them. The first ones that I gave you are from the Sanford Airport in Orlando, which has a much bigger Eagle problem. And it talks about in 2008 when they removed the three nests and how it did not work. They were doing the same thing there and that they've, they're learning to adapt by doing some other things. And they're also in this is an article, I actually got a copy of an email from somebody at VCU. They developed some kind of sound device that detears birds from nesting and they've apparently emailed and offered their assistance from VCU and a graduate student to come down and look at that. And then the last one was the one that you guys hear about often in the email, which is the Merlin system that over 100 airports are using now, which actually doesn't just help with safety from Eagles, it helps with all birds because it warns airplanes when birds are in that area. And so, once again, they are asking, you know, for a delay to look at some of these other options, which might end up being better for us with safety issues there. And also, the other concern is, is that when this, the dispersal happens with this, they do use paintball guns and they aim them towards the nest to try to scare the Eagles away from nesting. They also use pyrotechnics and some of that has been on display at Botanical Gardens, they've tried it out. One concern was that sometimes this does land in the waterways that are there and there, there's some concern about some of these items going into Lake Whitehurst if they land there, the pyrotechnic stuff. So, you might hear that again tonight, I think there's some people coming down to speak. As more and more people have researched this, they are just saying, this has been tried before in Orlando, it didn't work. We agree with you that there's an issue, we just want you to make the smartest decision with this and there are other options out there, we just hope that you'll consider it. And that's why they've asked for the delay. So, that's it.
Okay. You know, just as a follow-up, I understand they've asked for the delay, the council believes the man, at least has instructed the manager to go forward. Okay. And I've been taking a debate on it, so I, that's-
We didn't vote on it, he made the decision, so.
Well, I think this council, I mean, we've discussed, this is now the third time in three meetings that they have, I mean, so eventually we got to move on to other things.
I just want to give you some information, they, you might not have known.
Look, we, we are sort of, I think we are scheduled to meet next week, Tuesday. It is an afternoon meeting. I'm not going to be here, I'm going to be out of town. I'm either going to be at a, you know, board meeting or I'm going to be with my daughter in New York who's about to give birth to another child, a child. This, it's an afternoon meeting, we could cancel the meeting, or you guys can have it. We have two meetings, we could cancel before the end of the year, we've got at least two meetings we could cancel. And it's, I'm just going to put it up to you guys.
Do you have anything urgent? Let's cancel that. We're going to get them.
Can you get us an ordinance?
Okay.
Because we're going to be there for at least, is that okay?
That's great. We have some more time to prepare.
Oh, there's one more thing, I'm sorry. I brought this up in July because it was Christmas, but can we look at Christmas for the employees? I think it would be nice if we gave folks that work for us enough notice to be able to plan their Thanksgiving and their Christmas and just look at the days and when we're open and when we're not and, you know, what would traditionally be a half day. I think there's enough roomway in there that we can give them those days without doing any irreparable harm to city services, but, you know, not waiting until the week before November and saying, hey, summer time off.
If you ask Marcus to make a recommendation, he has staff who will actually come back here and say, it's cheaper to close. They, they sold us on that one year. But you have to-
I think it would be a nice thing to do for the employees.
But you have to require them to go to her hallway down Granby Street as well.
I don't think they'll have a problem with that.
Fair, truly. One other thing, we're scheduled to have an Amtrak kickoff on December 11th is the celebration, right?
Right.
And then December 12th, it actually starts, the train starts to work. Manager at my request has reserves, about 30, 35 tickets, half of a train. If anybody wants to ride, you have to buy your ticket, but this will, at least it'll put us all in one place. I mean, I think I'm going to take it to New York and come back three buddies.
Anthony, you know where you need to go?
If you wanted to-
I want to Boston.
Are you good? But Winter, it will be there, but he can't hold the tickets for too long, so you have to give him some idea. There are about 30 tickets and 30, 35 tickets and, but if you want to take, you know, it's going to be an historic type of ride if you want to.
That's a Wednesday?
I think December 12th, yeah.
Well, that's, that's on the 14th, 12th, no, that's not-
12th is the, yeah.
That's only, you said a Wednesday?
Do we know what time that kickoff's going to be? I don't know, the manager's going to tell us, I think they're still working on it. Tommy, let me say something about Eagles, I feel as badly as anybody does about this. I mean, I, I'm not trying to push it.
I just, no, I know you're not, I just, I mean, if they're playing-
Think that if you guys knew some more information, that if you look at something that would be more successful than I have, I would have been delighted to come back then. You got a great team. Yeah, I do. Okay. All right, Mr. Manager, thanks.
Okay. Sure, okay, so then, but that's it, Greg, which was here. Good to see you, Greg. And he's going to give you an update on Elizabeth River Crossings, actually a presentation that I received a while ago, it's very informative.
Well, we can probably hear you, Greg. First of all, I would like to thank the city manager, Marcus Jones, for inviting us today to provide an update to the council on the downtown tunnel, Midtown Tunnel MLK extension project. This is the most significant transportation solution-
This is the most significant transportation solution in the Hampton Roads region in the last 20 years, and we're real proud to be part of delivering this project in partnership with VDOT. Now, one thing I'll point your attention to, is we have branded the project Elizabeth River Tunnels. This was the business unit that VDOT had, and, uh, that's the one that we're gonna carry forward. And so, we, we call the project Elizabeth River Tunnels, operated by Elizabeth River Crossings in partnership with VDOT. As Marcus said, I'm, I'm Greg Woodsmall, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer with Elizabeth River Crossings, uh, OPCO LLC. And with me today, I've got a couple of folks who are part of our team. We've got Dallas Marlowe, who's our Construction Director, and Leila Rice, who is our Public Affairs Manager. And also joining us today, a couple of our partners with VDOT, have Frank Fabian, who's the Project Manager with VDOT, and, and Ha Kaler, who's comms, uh, person with VDOT as well. Now, Elizabeth River Crossings is the entity, or Elizabeth River Crossings OPCO, because let me clarify that, Elizabeth River Crossings was the organization that was in, in existence during the development phase. Elizabeth River Crossings OPCO was created to be the entity that delivered this project. And we're the entity that actually signed the contract or the comprehensive agreement with VDOT back on December 5th, 2011. Now, ERC OPCO is a special purpose company with the sole purpose of, of, for this project, to design, to construct, to operate and maintain this project. Now, at financial close, which occurred Friday the 13th, April the 13th of this year, uh, prior to that point in time, Elizabeth River Crossings OPCO had no employees. And in fact, our first employee joined the company on April 30th of this year, and I was number two. I don't know how I got slipped to number two, but I was the number two employee. And to date, uh, we currently have 107 employees, and during the peak of the construction period, will be up to approximately 140 employees. Now...
Greg, just for our benefit, I mean, that is for, that's your office of 140 employees?
Right.
Right?
Yes, the contractor itself has, uh, will generate, we've heard, in excess of 1,000 jobs for this project.
Right.
Yep. This is the entity, and I'll get into that a little bit, what our sole purpose is. Dallas is gonna touch base a little bit on the construction here in a minute, but, uh, I did mention that the project entails, of course, we know, the Midtown Tunnel, the new tube, uh, the extension of the Martin Luther King Freeway, and the interchanges on the I-264. Also at the Midtown is the interchanges, uh, at Brambleton Avenue and Hampton Boulevard. The project also includes the renovation of the existing tube at the Midtown, and the rehabilitation of the two existing, the westbound and eastbound tubes at the downtown. Now, the one thing this project also includes is the operations and maintenance for this project area for the next 58 years. In addition to that operation and maintenance, you'll see some dotted lines in your map, that is the area across the Berkeley Bridge, and the area across the Western Freeway to the first interchange. Uh, we've also accepted the incident management for those areas. So we'll be in, we'll be operating and maintaining the areas within the project, as well as the incident management in those other areas. Now, uh, our organization is currently, uh, located right here in Norfolk, on Monticello Avenue. Uh, that's, it's a, it's a temporary office, and once completed, we're gonna relocate our headquarters right here, on the Penner's Point side, and it should be completed in December, and that's where the majority of our employees will be housed. We also have a facility on State Street in Norfolk, which will, uh, has approximately 25 operations and maintenance personnel that will work out of that facility. And I'm also showing you here is, and I'll talk a bit, a little bit about the tolling aspect, but we've located our customer sever, service center on the Portsmouth side. Now, on July 13th, which happened to be a Friday the 13th as well, we had so much luck with the financial close on a Friday the 13th, we said, "Let's go for it again." Uh, at 10 o'clock on that evening, we took the keys to this facility here. That's when we actually began our operations and maintenance for this facility. In preparation for taking over that responsibility, we recruited and hired 63 of the existing VDOT employees who worked on these facilities previously for VDOT. Others elected to stay with VDOT, others elected to retire, and others elected to go elsewhere. But we were pleased to gain the institutional knowledge of the 63 employees to help us take over this operations and maintenance. Now, the thing that we have that VDOT didn't have for this project is dedicated funding and dedicated resources. It's everything we do, our whole sole purpose again, is dedicated for this project. Uh, we've entered into a number of service contracts with DBE and SWAM firms, and in fact, uh, to date, uh, we hit, we utilized the services of 12 DBE firms and 52 SWAM firms. I'm also pleased to announce that as a startup company, we did not have any, uh, physical resources. So we had no equipment, we had no vehicles. And the part I'm pleased to announce is that we purchased to date 1.3 million dollars in vehicles from Freedom Ford, right here in Norfolk, and also have another 560,000 worth of vehicles on order from that same vendor. Now, this dedication, what it allows us to do is provide a higher level of service than what VDOT could provide. One of the first things that we did, uh, and, and, one of the first things that's primary priority for us is safety first. And the one thing that we did was, we implemented a dedicated safety service patrol. Previously, VDOT had a, a, a safety service patrol that was portion of the I-264 corridor right here. We have a dedicated safety service patrol, we have one patrol dedicated to the, the Midtown corridor, and we have one dedicated to the Norfolk corridor. And as a result of that, and a new contract that we've put in place with Tidewater Express, our new record service, we've been able to achieve outstanding incident clearance response times. In the downtown corridor, it's been 14.4 minutes, and in the Midtown corridor, it's been 12.3 Now, we also are able to respond to issues a lot quicker for maintenance purposes. Uh, some of you may have heard about a reported flooding in the Midtown Tunnel a couple of weeks ago, and that there were nine to 12 inches of water in the tunnel. Well, that, that was incorrect. There was about one to two inches of standing water at mid-river. We closed the tunnel for a short period of time for safety purposes, with the bidirectional traffic, it's an unsafe issue. Uh, we were able to open the tunnel back up within 40 minutes, and we believe that's a record time for an incident such as that. Uh, one thing that we did detect was a pump sensor that failed, and we've since replaced, repaired that sensor, and have a new one on order. So again, here's a, a, a situation where we believe our dedicated resources to the project allow us to, to deliver a level of service that VDOT was not able to deliver. We've also implemented a, a, a 1-855 ERT road number, that anyone can pick up the phone and call that 24/7 to report any maintenance issues. We've implemented a lot more frequent litter pickups, and we've also implemented a much more aggressive, uh, mow cycle with our landscaping. One of the things that we have done is work with the City of Norfolk's, uh, staff here, specifically over on the Midtown Tunnel side, and for those of you that travel that area, you probably note that significantly, uh, aesthetic, significant improvement to the aesthetics in that area. Uh, normally, VDOT would normally mow about three times a year, which is their statewide standard. Uh, at a minimum for the project area, we will mow four times, and have a fifth one, uh, available within the budget. In these locations within the city, we plan to mow every three weeks. And a part of that, that effort in, in working to, uh, improve the service, we've met with the, the folks right there on Raleigh Avenue, and they're very pleased to the level of service that we've provided in that area. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dallas Marlowe for a few slides.
Don't have to excuse me, I'm used to talking to, uh, people with hard hats on and, and work boots, not, not ties and suits. But, uh, my name is Dallas Marlowe. I've worked in construction my, my whole career, uh, more years than I care to imagine. But I've been brought here to oversee the construction of the, uh, of the Midtown Tunnel, the retrofits, and the construction of the MLK. Uh, tonight, I'm just gonna talk, touch on the things that, uh, would interest the City of Norfolk, or, you know, in, in the highlights here. But the, uh, upon financial close, a contract came into effect that, uh, with a joint venture of Skanska, Kiwett, and Weeks Marine. It's a 1.54 billion dollar contract to construct those structures. And the, and Skanska has an office right here, they're, they're, uh, locally based, and their, their regional office here, their construction office is here. Uh, just recently opened up their Penner Points office on VPA property, and it's, uh, rather a huge office, they're gonna bring in over 200 people into the area to work on this project, uh, salaried individuals. Plus another 600 or so, um, hourly people will work on the project in this area. There'll be another 300 to 400 people working up at Penner's Point to fabricate the, uh, the tunnel sections. The, just recently, we, we entered into an agreement with the City of Norfolk to supply a, the water line, the new water line across the river. It's gonna be, currently, it's a 30-inch line, it had to be moved for the tunnel construction, it's gonna be upgraded to a 36-inch line. And the, from what I understand, that 36-inch line was very important to the overall growth of the city. The, when you, on this timeline, when you, um, look at what you're gonna see out there, the first thing that you'll probably see is the, is the installation of the water line. It takes place starting in October, they'll start building the jacking pits, they'll start assembling the pipe. In November, the, um, jacking contractor will move in, and December, he'll actually start jacking across the river by jacking, he'll, it's a jack and bore type deal, he'll, uh, go across the river, grab the pipe at Portsmouth, and pull it back through the, the hole that he's jacked into place. And the water line should be installed and ready, uh, to be put back in service, uh, in April. Or the new one will be in service in April. I think the actual downtime is only a few days, where we actually make the connections. The, uh, next thing that you'll see that will, uh, get people's interest is the dredging for the tunnel will start taking place in February, uh, next year. And by the time the dredging is complete, the, and, and the rock base put down, then, uh, the tunnel sections will start showing up in, uh, the, uh, November of 2014. And it'll, one, there'll be approximately one tunnel section per month placed across the tunnel. So the, it'll be almost a solid year before the, all the tunnel sections are in place, backfilled, and, uh, we can start constructing the inside of the tunnel. By September of, uh, 16, we expect the tunnel to be open. That's actually about four months, three to four months ahead of schedule. So, the contractor has introduced a very ambitious schedule, and the, uh, and we're hopefully gonna watch him complete it on time, or ahead of schedule, and on budget.
That's four years from today, four years from this month?
Uh, four years from this month, he'll have the tunnel, the tunnel be completed.
We'll be driving through the Midtown Tunnel.
You'll be able to, uh, that is his plan, is you'll be able to drive through the Midtown Tunnel going westbound, um, the new one. The, uh, eastbound tunnel will be the old one. And the, so there's a, there's a few transitional things he has to do, and by, um, December of 2016, he'll start the rehab of the, uh, of the old tunnel, the old Midtown Tunnel. Which brings me to the tunnel rehab. The first thing that has to be done is the ventilation. And what they'll do is they'll go through on the westbound 264 tunnel on the rehab, and put in, take, take the rest of the roof out, there's still a little bit of the roof left in there, and, uh, then they'll put in the jet fans, and, um, for the ventilation. Now, the, the new ventilation that's being built, is being built to meet present-day safety standards and air quality standards. And the new ventilation system, um, along with the electrical, fire safety systems, communication, and structural systems, are all designed to bring this tunnel up as much as practical to present-day standards. The, uh, between the ventilation system and the fire safety system, the tunnel will be able to take a 100-watt fire, while currently it's, um, designed for a five-watt fire, megawatt fire. The, um, the lighting system will be upgraded, that's a, that alone is a 22 million dollar upgrade for the three tunnels, the three existing tunnels. The light, the lighting in the tunnels will, uh, meet or exceed the lighting that you see in the Hampton Roads tunnels or the Monitor Merrimack tunnels. The, um, that is something that we could have contractually put off for about five years. We have chosen to do it, the, uh, during the rehabilitation, because of the, um, the lighting is, is substandard right now, we're dedicated to the safety, we feel that this will help improve safety going forward. Uh, any questions? Now, here comes the part that nobody wants to hear about, because I've, I've done a lot of construction projects, and nobody wants to hear about the impact of traffic. We're gonna start the downtown rehab, right now, it's under design, from time to time, you'll see people in there, um, lanes closed, so that we can evaluate what's there. But the new, uh, the proposed start date for the, uh, rehab is October of 13th, so about a year from now, they'll go in there and they'll start rehabbing. The westbound tunnel is gonna be completed in September of 15th, so you have about 23, uh, months of rehabilitation work that's gonna go, go on in there. The single lane closures, which are, uh, Sunday night through, uh, Thursday night, is 280 single lane closures. The full weekend closures, there's 25 of them, the, uh, the, the work will be phased, but when you start adding it up, the, uh, about half, half the time that this tunnel's under rehab work, the, uh, will be impacted traffic. On the eastbound tunnel, when the ventilation is in place on the westbound tunnel, we'll start the rehabilitation of the eastbound tunnel, and there's about a nine-month overlap. So you could see week, you're not gonna see any weekend closures where the tunnels close in both directions, but you could very well see lane closures at night during the week, where there's the tunnels down to one lane in each direction. in each direction. The new tunnel has to be in place for the Midtown Tunnel rehabilitation to start. So when I mentioned that it'd be a September of 16 completion date, there's a few months where we have to do some work to get everything operating properly. And then the existing Midtown Tunnel rehabilitation will start in December of 16. And we should wrap this project up in April of 18. The, you know, there will be some impact on traffic, we're going to try to keep it to a minimum. The, we're contractually obligated to certain dates, and the, both ERC and the contractor will entertain, you know, special events. You know, the, we're definitely not going to close the tunnel or interrupt anything during up-sell or in major holidays and stuff. But the last thing that would, in opinion, that would interest the council here is Elizabeth River Trail. We're, we have to close it, and the, there's about a half-mile section that has to be closed. The, we've been working with the city engineering department, city parks department, the trail, city trail department to come up with a solution. Our biggest concern is safety. We're going to run the detour down Red Gate and through the Gant neighborhood. The, we're going to put in wheelchair ramps, where right now there is none. We're going to make sure that there's no lips on the sidewalk, we don't want anybody tripping. We're going to sign it, and there'll be places where we'll be landscaping it, and we'll make sure that we have a safe, usable trail during the detour process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're running short on time, we've got a, if you guys could help us.
Well, as we do begin what will obviously be a long-term partnership with the cities of Norfolk and Portsmouth, we, ERC wants to also help create a more productive and enriched community through charitable contributions and also through community involvement. In addition to the nearly $2 million annual subsidy to HRT to increase bus and ferry service between Norfolk and Portsmouth, we're focusing our contributions, which we hope to include as charitable donations, sponsorships, employee volunteering, and other initiatives on four main areas: education, youth development, health and wellness, and the environment. We are implementing a scholarship program at the Norfolk and Portsmouth High Schools. The ERC Good Citizens Scholarship Program will begin, go into effect this year, the 2012-2013 school year, and will award one college-bound high school senior from each high school in Norfolk and in Portsmouth with a $1,500 scholarship on an annual basis. We're looking right now, we're also seeking input for community charities from both the Norfolk and Portsmouth communities to support. So if you all, in your packets, you have my card, please feel free to reach out to me if you have some suggestions from your city, and I'm happy to speak with you on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
In closing, briefly just talk about the tolling. The tolling is scheduled to begin February the 1st, 2014. Originally, we were geared up to toll August 1st of this year. We entered into an arrangement with VDOT to delay that period. And just real quickly, there'll be two forms of payment. It'll be either the EZ Pass or video. And as I mentioned earlier, we are going to open a customer service center on the Portsmouth side at 700 Port Center Parkway, and that customer service center is outsourced to our vendor. They will employ approximately 45 employees at that site. And again, it's to assist individuals with the video customers, as well as will be a distribution site for EZ Pass.
Thank you.
If we have time, we'll take a few questions?
I have a couple of questions. You were speaking of your minority participation, and you mentioned the SWAM as well as other minority participation. Can you break, can you break that down in terms of African-American subcontractors, contractors, women, and also disabled veterans or companies?
We certainly can do that. I don't have that information with me, but we could provide for you. We have some pretty, I mean, there's, the goals per the contract, we're required 15% DBE and 25% SWAM on all goods and services.
Okay. And then you mentioned your 140 employees, and then your potential 1,000 employees, although you haven't hired those persons yet. If I could get an idea, what that might be ratio?
Okay. I think when Dallas, I had mentioned the 1,000, and with regards to ERC OPCA, which is the operating company, when we're in full construction, and part of the team, which is Dallas manages, that includes our construction management, we'll have 135 employees plus the 45 employees that are our vendor's back office. In addition to that, there's the Skanska-Kiwet Weeks joint venture that will employ up to 1,000 employees during the construction period. And I think Dallas had mentioned, there's a portion of them that are currently located or just relocated over to Penner's Point. There's a number of craft workers, there's upwards to 600 that we hired in the area, and there will also be about 300 employees hired up at Sparrow's Point in Baltimore, where the tubes are being fabricated.
And I don't know whether this applies to that, for minority contractors, whether it's SWAM or whatever, that are, that need bonding capacity, is there anything that you're doing to help them with bonding capacity to be able to participate in this project?
I can't speak to the specifics of what we're doing. I can tell you that there's been considerable amount of outreach, and VDOT has sponsored those events. And we're trying to work every which way, every way possible with all interested parties. And so the contractor, because this is a large contract, has debundled some of the activities to much smaller contracts.
Right, thank you.
My concern has always been with this is the lack of toll booths for people who want to pay cash. I just have a concern with this because of tourists who come here. You know, I traveled down to Florida recently and got stuck in that situation, and I just think there were no signs to indicate that this was going to be happening, that there was no cash option with this. And I'm just wondering how we are educating people before they get to this location? Is there an alternative route that they could take if they didn't want to do this? I'm probably too late in this, I brought this up a year ago and we discussed it, I just think that it's, you know, this idea that you're going to get charged because you possibly didn't know about having the Fastpass is, to me, just unacceptable for people who are visiting our city, or even going to Virginia Beach. I think this has implications for people going to the oceanfront, you know, for tourist reasons.
Well, without the all-electronic tolling environment, we would defeat the purpose of the traffic throughput. The toll booth would just stop the traffic to a standstill, and so we would not have flow flowing, free-flowing traffic. To the point that you have just mentioned, we'll have, in fact, we had to call it off because of the tolling delay, a significant outreach program where we're announcing all of the issues associated with the tolling. We're going to market the tolling, very similar to what you're seeing from Jordan Bridge right now. We'll have, again, we're going to have our own dedicated customer service center here in the project area that will distribute EZ passes as well as sign-up folks for the video tolling. And to that point that you're talking about, we want to work with customers. We're not going to gig an individual on that first pass, that first individual time that you have to use it, you get a video invoice. And in fact, the way the code is structured, you have to send an invoice, and before anybody's treated as a violator, they have to be given 30 days to pay the invoice. Also, the code requires is that we have the appropriate signage out that identifies where the last exit is that they would, could take without getting exposed to the toll. So we will have that signage in place.
Marketing to like Google Maps and all the places where people pull up maps to make sure that it's listed on there, because that was the issue that I had in Florida, nowhere on there did it say, "There's toll." And I'm sure that if you have people working, that you let them know this, you know?
We have a very aggressive marketing campaign planned. We were ready to implement it when we thought that tolling was going to happen this year. But we, that's part of it, it's also working with, looking at working with GPS companies as well to make sure that their maps are updated to indicate that. And there will be an aggressive education campaign as well.
Yeah, we recognize those as concerns, and we're trying to address them the best way possible.
Is there anywhere in the country where, say, you have teachers that can buy in and get a reduced rate if they're traveling through this? If they bought into a pot and trying to be friendly with employees or people, our employees here, like we do with Light Rail, where we buy at a kind of a discounted rate, you still get more money, you still get money out of it, but out of respect to the people that are...
We view the discount program as the EZ Pass rate. That's the cheapest form of payment that an individual could pay for the toll. And the base rate is $1.59 as opposed to the fee is the other toll that you would have to pay with the video premium.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, Council.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Madam's Council, I want to officially introduce our Special Assistant to the City Manager for Military and Veterans Affairs. I know that he's met many of you informally over the past several months, but Captain John Andrews is a native of Virginia Beach, a Virginia Tech graduate, had a 29-year career in the Navy, started as a naval aviator, and ended as an executive officer within the U.S. Central Command. He's recognized as a DoD expert in management and strategic planning. He's been very effective since he's come on board, and with that, he's going to give you an overview of what he's been up to.
Thank you.
Good to see you, John.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of Council, thank you for having me here today and giving me the opportunity to brief. As Ron said, I'm the Special Assistant for Veterans Affairs and Military, or for Veteran Services and Military Affairs. And as that title indicates, I have really two aspects of my job. The first aspect I'd like to talk about is Veteran Services. My objective in that realm is to make the city of Norfolk the best city in the nation for active-duty military, National Guard members, reservists, veterans, and their families to live, work, recreate, seek education, and obtain healthcare. It's an all-accomplishing approach that focuses on both veterans and active duty, and my measure right now is the USA Best Places for Military Retirement Poll that highlights the best places in the nation for jobs that match veteran and retiree's skill set. 2011, Oklahoma City, Norfolk, and Richmond were 1, 2, and 3 respectively in that poll, and Raleigh-North Carolina, excuse me, Raleigh-North Carolina was number 8. Richmond was just shy of the top spot due to its relatively low score in the small-business category. To me, that indicates that competition in this arena is stiff, and much of that competition is geographically close at hand. For Military Affairs, my objective is to improve customer support for military and federal entities within the city of Norfolk, facilitate the abilities of those commands to accomplish their assigned missions, and in conjunction with the Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, otherwise known as HARMFA, work to retain existing entities and attract new organizations. I also will communicate with and coordinate with military organizations regarding actions that may have economic impact on the city of Norfolk. Continued access is a very important factor in the accomplishment of this objective. Relationships are key to this access, and my relationships, I believe, were a factor in my being hired for this position. Time and exposure is a factor in the maintenance of that relationship, and it's important that I continue to attend and represent the ceremony, or represent the city, excuse me, at ceremonial events. As an example, I want to point out that I was invited, I was invited to and will attend the Change of Office Ceremony in Washington, DC for the Master Chief Petty Officer of the Navy, or MCPON as we call him, the highest-ranking enlisted member in the Navy, where Master Chief Rick West will be replaced by Master Chief Mike Stevens. This is significant in that I, as a representative of the city of Norfolk, was invited, and I would be able to maintain my existing contacts and foster new ones while there. I was also able to facilitate Brian Pettitons, our Director of Intergovernmental Relations, invite for this event as well, and this will facilitate his ability to build important contacts and relationships. For background on Veteran Services, yeah, I know, we're going to send Brian and I to DC together, that might be a problem, but we'll fight through it.
We'll have to keep this guy under control.
Okay. For Veteran Services background, over 300,000 personnel transition from military service each year. If military downsizing continues as it has here at recent, there is potential for a significant increase to that number. Historical data shows that military, when military members transition, 1/3 go back to their home of record, 1/3 stay from the, in the area where they transition from, and 1/3 go to where the jobs are. I want to focus on those who stay, and that's 13,000 locally each year, and also on creating a job-rich environment for those who go to where the jobs are. Besides the potential for growth in the ship repair and ship construction industry, I believe that there's potential for growth in the following industries, and I will do the best that I can to facilitate that. First, cyber and cybersecurity. In the spring, Navy Cyber 4 will move from Joint Expeditionary Base Little Creek to the old JIFCON spaces, the old JIFCON spaces in Suffolk, where there is room for expansion and growth. This will, it would provide a continued defense focus on cyber and cybersecurity in the region. Second is modeling and simulation. The Virginia Modeling and Simulation Center is a state-of-the-art facility in the program at ODU. Their modeling and simulation program that supports it gives expertise to support growth in this industry. And finally, there's the unmanned aerial systems, UAVs or UASs as they're referred to. Everybody realizes the military potential, that's well documented. There is a significant market potential for UAVs in the civilian sector. HARMFA has made it a legislative priority to facilitate the regions selected by the FAA as one of the six sites nationally that will be used to develop the procedures for operating unmanned aerial systems in our national airspace. Right now, without a waiver, you can't fly a UVA in, or UAV, excuse me, in U.S. airspace. And if, for Norfolk, it's good to be close to this, and for the proximity, we'd be good. And then the expedition of civil capability will also be beneficial to us. So those are the market segments that I focus on as I look for potential for growth here in the region. I've talked about potential for growth. I do want to mention at the end here, sequestration, because that is a potential for growth to stop. I'll just mention it briefly. For the last three years, we've operated without a budget on a federal basis, and we've worked under a series of continuing resolutions. In January of this year, they created a super committee that was tasked to create a budget agreement, and that group failed. When they failed, sequestration has come into effect. And what sequestration means, unless someone does something before January 1st, there will be automatic $1.2 trillion cuts across the board in spending. The real issue for Norfolk and Hampton Roads is that half of that, over $580, is mandated to come from defense. A conservative estimate is that Virginia will lose 130,000 jobs, so that's a bad thing for us. I'm going to work under the premise, along with the Department of Defense and everybody else, that that sequestration's not going to happen. So I still plan on finding good jobs for veterans to find when they come here. I want to discuss briefly some barriers to veteran employment. Some employers perceive military experience as too specialized to translate effectively into the civilian workplace. In most cases, vets will have a requirement for additional training, and vets lack civilian credentials. It's estimated about 30% of military personnel who separate from the service each year will need a credential, whether a license or certificate issued by a third party to qualify their military training before working in civilian jobs. As I was exiting the service, excuse me, and looked at the various jobs, I needed a PMP, Project Management Professional Certificate, to apply for many of the jobs that I looked In many cases, there's no direct correlation between military occupations and the civilian sector, and veterans are not skilled or schooled in job search techniques. They have, the veterans have difficulty understanding what they can do, and then they have difficulty understanding how understanding how to find jobs. For the most cases, everybody just thinks you go to monster.com, and the job is going to just pop up on the screen for you, and away you go. I want to give you a picture of veterans within the Commonwealth of the region briefly. There's 823,000 residents, or veterans, in Virginia. 28,613 of those reside at Norfolk. Of that number, over 4,000 have some level of service-related disability. Over 3,000 are unemployed, and over 100 are homeless. There's been a slight declination in Norfolk's veteran population. It was 30,080 in 2,000. We're now at the 28,613 number. The only other city in Hampton Road that has had a decline is Portsmouth. For unemployment, Virginia's overall rate is 5.6%. Norfolk's overall rate is 8.4%. And this is based on statistics released in July, and I think we've had some new statistics just come out, and they may change these numbers by a small amount. For both Virginia and Norfolk, the veterans' unemployment rate is 10.6%. And a very disconcerting number is that for veterans aged 20 to 24, their unemployment rate is over 30%. All right. Why recruit veterans? And I guess the follow-on question is, why hire somebody like me to facilitate the recruitment of those people? First, veterans are high-quality, prescreened employees. Last year, 75% of graduating seniors did not meet military entry requirements. Those requirements are a high school diploma, not a GED, a score of 50 or better on the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test. In my experience, 30 to 35 was the norm. Body fat and physical fitness standards. They can have no felonies and no drug misdemeanors. Veterans have been demonstrated to bring bottom-line improvements. They bring with them tax benefits, reduced training requirements, and desired attributes. As detailed in the business case for hiring a veteran beyond the cliches from Syracuse University published in March of this year, veterans assume a high level of trust, are adept at skills transfer across contexts and tasks, have and leverage advanced technical training, exhibit advanced team-building skills, exhibit strong organizational commitment. They have and leverage cross-cultural experiences and have experience and skill in diverse work settings. Veterans also have been demonstrated to strengthen their communities. They participate in a higher than average rate in community organizations, civic leagues, schools, and charitable organizations. In short, veterans add value. This slide details my actions to date. I've been on board five months. I'm in the process of developing a veteran-centric workforce development initiative in conjunction with educational institutions and goodwill industries of central Virginia. At the direction of the City Manager, I facilitated the creation of two committees, Veterans Affairs Committees, and I'd like to recognize the members in the row here that honored me by coming to this presentation tonight. Tom Leicher, Jack Schwartz, and Mr. Al Stewart, thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming down very much. Thank you.
And I have to say, they're proposed members, because y'all haven't voted on the membership yet, so they are the individuals that are helping me with this process. That committee will work on recognition, honoring, and remembering veterans, and also create a social network that I'll talk about in a little bit. We've also created the Military Economic Development Advisory Committee. It's made up of senior retired military members and civilians with experience and expertise in the defense industry. For the city, I've facilitated the application for VetStrong certification, and this certification is issued by the Virginia Department of Veteran Services, and it's an assessment and customized training for those who will commit to hiring and retraining veterans in Virginia. I have sought out membership on workforce development boards. I proposed for Opportunity Inc. Board of Directors, and I've been selected as the Chairman of Virginia Employment Committee, or, excuse me, Virginia Employment Commission Employers' Advisory Committee. The majority of my time, however, has been spent on the creation of partnerships. This slide and the following detail the organizations that I have partnered with. They include federal and military support entities, Commonwealth agencies and personnel, private and nonprofit entities, and educational institutions. I have codified agreements, such as the one with Carolina Shipyard, or agreement in principle to work towards common goals. I want to point out in particular a continued partnership that we've had in the city with the White House Director of Policy for Veteran Services, Wounded Warriors, and Military Families. This has resulted in recognition on the White House blog for the efforts of the city of Norfolk. It has allowed us to participate with the Director of Joining Forces with an initiative with Webby and Mary, in which law students will conduct a pilot program where they facilitate and speed up the process of disability claims for Veterans Affairs. And it's also resulted in an invitation from both the Director of Joining Forces and Ms. Cloud, the White House Policy Director, to our Veterans Day ceremony in November. This is the second slide of the partners that I've had to date. All right, my intended actions or my strategy, this was a blank canvas when I got here, and I've done a lot of research, and I've come up with what I view as a good plan. It's a place-based model. You can read the definition, but this is a derivation of the Department of Education's Place-Based Strategy, and it was detailed in a progress report issued in June of 2012. Besides that definition, the following bullets really pertain. I'm going to engage all entities involved in or supportive of Veteran Services, act as a catalyst, and create a network, and enable Norfolk to serve as an instrument of action, a real service-delivery point of action, to direct resources and give information to individual veterans. And finally, I want to support transition in a state of wellness. State of Wellness is a strategy that I've adapted from a report written by Ms. Nancy Burglast titled, "Well After Service." It describes four pillars that are supportive of an all-accompagnable approach to veteran reintegration. It does just not deal with jobs. The pillars are purpose, employment, and education, material needs, financial stability, housing, access to goods and services, health comprised of mental health, access to care and physical health, social and personal relationships comprised of family, social networks, and spirituality. And that's where my Veterans Affairs Committee will play a big part as well. Y'all have to excuse the graphics, I'm not a professional, but this is my creation, and this is, to me, what success looks like. This is my network. This is Norfolk serving as a catalyst. This is an effort to connect the silos, the over 1,000 nonprofits in the state of Virginia that are registered with the IRS with Veteran Services as their primary mission, nonprofits, educational institutions, Commonwealth entities, you name it. It's my job in the city of Norfolk to get all of them working together in a common effort, common goal to support veterans as they transition from service to civil employment. I want to talk briefly about Military Affairs. This is the second aspect of my position focused on customer support for military and federal entities. We are heavily engaged in NATO Fest expansion. I believe that that event this year will be a much larger and would have much greater participation from the military across the spectrum in the area. Participated in and organized ceremonial events, arranged homecomings. I want to specifically point out the USS Norfolk, our namesake vessel that will return in late fall, and it is my intent to have appropriate recognition for that. And I've also worked with HARMFA, the Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance, to retain and attract military and federal entities, and there's several initiatives ongoing in that area. And finally, I've made efforts towards PTSD trading, post-traumatic stress disorder. And that's really based on your prompting here at the various council meetings. Partnered with the Community Services Board to create support for education screening, outreach and services, and I'm doing that via the resources located at Portsmouth Naval Hospital and the Wounded Warriors Program that resides at the hospital there. I'm working with Sarah Page Fuller to get her personnel trained by those individuals over there, and it's a train-to-trainer concept, and they can come back specifically trained the first responders as they deal with personnel who may be affected by this issue. Finally, my next steps. Very excited about the potential for this one step, or Vet-centric one step, or one-stop, excuse me, and I will continue that effort in conjunction with and supported by Goodwill, Opportunity Inc., the Virginia Employment Commission, Fleet and Family Support Center, veteran support organizations, and the Commonwealth of Virginia. We will continue applying to federal grants and a lesson learned that it is a measure, or you're more successful in that process when you apply with the municipality as the lead. And that will frame the partnerships that I create as we apply for these grants. I do intend to create a veteran knowledge fusion website and pursue the VetStrong accreditation and creation of a municipal model for the Commonwealth of Virginia. They're very excited about that potential, and we meet September 17th with that group to discuss the follow-on for that endeavor. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is a brief introduction and discussion of what I've done to date.
John, that's a great presentation. If you have a question...
Well, yeah, I just wanted to let you know, the Oceanview Golf Course, Billy Casper Group sponsors a Wounded Warrior tournament, and this was the first year that they supported that. I went down there and gave some remarks on behalf of the city, but this is the first year they are going to continue doing that, and they've asked for next year to have a resolution from the city, recognize that they did pretty good down there. Overall, Billy Casper, I think, had raised $350,000 for Wounded Warriors. It was a good program.
Great.
Yeah, it was nice to see that you had the post-traumatic stressors on it, involved in your efforts. One of the things that is, as I think back on what it used to be, at one time, if a veteran got out of the service during Korea, World War II, or Vietnam, they had a 10-point veterans preference, you know, for jobs at the shipyards, air stations, the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, or supplies. And I think those organizations stopped doing it higher than themselves and gave those jobs to contractors to hire. And when they did, that's what created this situation of so many veterans who are unemployed. At one time, a veteran could get out of the military, go down to the civilian employment office at one of these facilities I mentioned, and would get a job. But when they put them in a contractor's lap, then there's no more 10-point veterans preference, I don't believe, and things of that nature that made it easier for veterans to be hired. It's no fault of your own, it's no fault of yours, you just inherited this situation.
Counselman, I agree with you that that is an issue. That 10-point preference still exists.
Does it?
Yes, sir. And we have, and that's what makes Norfolk one of the areas in that poll so attractive, because of the number of civil service jobs available. The problem is that veterans don't understand it. They don't know how to write the applications. I'll tell you, I myself failed in four endeavors to get in my civil services application. And when I create this veteran-centric knowledge fusion website, that's one of the things I'm going to work on. Someone needs to simplify the process at USA Jobs that says, "These are your benefits, these are your advantages, this is how you apply." And I'm working with the group of individuals back here, Disabled Veterans Associations and whatnot, to assist me in that, because you're right, it's not known, and it's not used, it's there, and we need to take advantage of it.
That's good. That's great.
Okay, we're running short on time. John, we're going to have you back maybe on a quarterly basis or so to give us, maybe four months or so, to give us some updates. There's a lot out there that we haven't done in the past. You can just see from this program here, things that we haven't paid attention to that looks like you now are going to be at least working for us. And we certainly appreciate the cooperation of veterans here. There are a number of things that they'll be able to advise us of, of things that we can improve with their relationship with the government, with the city, but also how we can make their livelihoods here, too. So we're going to make it a great place for veterans to live and work as well.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much for that very detailed presentation. Frank, we're going to be, you've got to be quick, man, because I want to spend five or six minutes in closed session here.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a presentation you heard before, and it was two months ago, back in June. So the City Manager thought we might want to give you, or you may want to get a real quick reminder of what this is. This is the Advantage Investments Public Hearing tonight. It includes a general plan amendment, a street closure, and a rezoning. The property, again, is this small property in the Estebrook neighborhood. It is the former site of the Estebrook Inn. The Estebrook Inn existed there, and it closed more than two years ago. It was closed when I got in office five years ago. Property is zoned C1, which means that a restaurant cannot go on this property unless it's rezoned. Problem we have is that there is no parking on this site. The building occupies the entire site. What the Estebrook Inn was using for parking was this public right-of-way that has never been opened as a road immediately to the north of the building. So in order to make this thing work, what we need is a plan amendment to change the designation of the property to commercial, and to, I'm sorry, not to do that, but to remove this road segment from the transportation improvement map of the city, which defines that as a major roadway, because that is your only direct connection to this undeveloped industrial property behind it. So you need that plan amendment, then you need to close the street. You cannot close the street unless we amend the general plan to eliminate that road segment, and then you need to do a rezoning. Again, the property is currently designated for industrial. It is proposed to be commercial, so I was wrong. It doesn't require the land use designation, and it requires the removal of this road segment from the general plan's transportation improvement map. We don't believe that this road is needed any longer. In 1992, it was defined as a critical segment. It was not defined as a critical segment in the Plan Norfolk 2030 because of other road improvements that have been made, and this is a substandard right-of-way. It's only 38 feet wide. Typically, we would never build a public street in a right-of-way. It's narrow. The problem is, again, however, this is the only point of access without going back through the Estebrook neighborhood to this industrial site behind. And the general plan has a specific policy that says, as a city, we will minimize the impact of industrial traffic through neighborhoods. And public works has acknowledged that because of that policy, they would build that street, even though it is substandard right-of-way, if they were asked in order to avoid having the traffic from this industrial use wind its way through the neighborhood. So the issues that we have is if you don't close the right-of-way, you cannot approve the zoning, because the property will not meet parking requirements, it will not meet the basic zoning requirements for the site. If the right-of-way is closed, it does barely meet the parking requirements. The applicant has proffered they will develop the site consistent with the site plan that you see. They're going to limit the uses to an eating and drinking establishment or a restaurant, so there'd be no concern about bigger uses coming through, and they'd limit the hours of the establishment, as you see here. At the public hearing, you had a very mixed bag. You had the applicant and four citizens speak in support of this, this is the public hearing of the Planning Commission, and a letter of support from the Estebrook Civic League. We had three citizens come out and speak in opposition to it because of the potential impacts on the neighborhood, as well as a letter of opposition from one of the adjacent property owners. So the recommendations from both staff and the Planning Commission, on the plan amendment, we both recommended approval based on the major conditions represented by Plan Norfolk 2030. On the street closure, staff recommended denial based on the policy in the plan that says we will minimize the impacts of industrial traffic through neighborhoods. And again, as you close the street, you are going to force the traffic through the neighborhood. Planning Commission recommended approval for the majority said they were doing this because of the support of the Civic League. The minority said that they couldn't support it because of the potential impact of industrial traffic on the neighborhood. And then with the rezoning, staff recommended denial because we can't support the street closure. Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve that if the street closure is approved.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Nobody uses that now, right?
You can't use it right now.
Is there potential for expansion of that industrial area back there, or is it built out?
It is undeveloped right now.
It's a huge...
It's a very large vacant lot.
Yeah. There's debt.
This is an industrial use, and they come in through the street above this that is a straight shot back to that industrial use. This one, you have no straight shot if you lose this. The traffic will wind through the neighborhood.
Oh, sir, they're using what now?
I don't remember the name of the street, but there's another street block up here.
Okay.
Amherst.
Amherst, thank you, Mr. Reddick. And that is a direct shot into this industrial site.
Okay. So they're not using the road now? So they're not using the road now?
This, this road doesn't exist right now.
Right, right.
It's unopened right-of-way. The issue you've got is this road goes all the way through back here. That parcel is undeveloped.
How, how big is that parcel?
It's many.
It's very large. Several acres.
If you close it, then it's still not a road.
This would not be a road, and what that's going to do is push the industrial traffic down Amherst and back down County Street to get into this. So it will wind the industrial traffic through the neighborhood.
Is it winding through now?
No, sir, because right now, it's a straight shot. That parcel's not developed. That's the developed parcel.
So, what was it saying, they're going to develop that part?
What we've got to look at is that the parcel does have the potential to be developed.
Is that, that's the property owner that's opposed to it?
Yeah, but they can't take big trucks through the neighborhood, so.
They would be able to take big trucks through a neighborhood if this is developed industrial, which, because they'd have to be able to get their industrial trucks through the neighborhood back to this.
The neighborhood typically could say that that's okay.
Yes.
A couple of neighbors saying that's not okay.
That's correct.
When did it become okay to take industrial trucks?
You have to allow industrial traffic access to industrial property. That's why we don't support the street closure because of route.
If they built it, if they built it, they would take Woodrow.
If they were to build, if they were to build on this now, they'd be pushing for the city to open this.
I was saying, we didn't do that.
Then we could require that they build this road.
I was saying, we didn't do that.
Then they would be winding through the neighborhood.
Family style is what the.
I pass that property every day going to work, and I'm totally familiar with it. And I guess, I support being able to, you know, open that little business personally.
Didn't a car just go through one of those places over there?
Is there a way to limit the traffic?
I have no way to limit the traffic.
No way to make it no trucks around.
My question, Frank, is, right here, is this, is that owned by that person with that property?
Yes.
It is, okay. So there's no way to just eliminate that parking and let that be an entrance?
No, sir, that is the parking for this upriver intersection.
If they were going to come down Amherst.
He could take an 18-wheeler through. So let me, let me ask you something. Those streets there are about 28 feet wide. Okay, you got, you're able to park on both sides of the street. Okay, let's say for the sake of argument, that's industrial. You said that 18-wheelers have the right to meander through the neighborhood, through the streets.
If that's the, if that's the only way they can get to that parcel, yes.
If that's the case, and you got people parked on both sides, okay, how would they then get through? Whose responsibility is it at that point?
That's why we have the concern, is because of the potential impacts of that traffic going through this.
I'm not talking about the concern, if it stays a, I assume a paper street now?
This is a paper street, yes.
Right, and if we did develop that paper street, and like I said, those streets are about 28 feet wide, and you've got cars on both sides, then an 18-wheeler tries to go through there. The city bears no responsibility in terms of making sure that that 18-wheeler gets through those streets.
And I would agree with you that they have a right to go down that road, but we have no responsibility to ensure that road is clear enough to accommodate them, and that is simply going to force them to go back and forth through the neighborhood, finding a way to get back there. That's my concern.
But if they can't get back there, then it doesn't make real business sense to try to build something back there, knowing that you don't have access.
That's the concern of the property owner, that if you take this out, you have eliminated development potential on this site.
Who owns that property?
B&amp;L machines. The machinery people.
The machinery people.
The same people who own the B&amp;L machines own that property.
Wait a minute, they own that piece, why couldn't they access, if they access straight in there, come right in front of their property?
Because that's their parking.
Use some of the industrial area for parking.
They could, if they have the potential, if they came around and moved it, I mean, they could.
I said, I just asked.
If they, and that's fine, if they, that's fine, if they add on, if some, if they sell it and have some other business develop there.
They'd always be rezoned.
But they would have to, in order to market, it would have to adjust the site plan so that they have the access rather than go through the neighborhood.
They'd always sell it and rezon.
I think you wanted to go to a closed session.
Well, Marcus, you want to say anything here quickly about the, I mean, just, can you just, Social Security or something, recycling?
Sure, very quickly, before you went out for a break, there was a discussion about Social Security building accessibility. We've had an opportunity to talk with the couple of commissions, mayor that you have, as well as staff from HRT and from the Social Security Administration, and we do have a short-term solution that we could just put in your packet on Friday. It would include some sidewalks, some moving of signage, that would work. And then the only other thing is that we, last year, we had about 12 items dealing with being more efficient. We have come to an agreement with recycling. We think it's a win-win all the way across the city, and we can also include that in your packet on Friday.
Okay. So you wanted to go to a closed session.
Can I just ask a quick question, since we're not meeting next Tuesday? When will we get an idea of what the retreat is going to cover? Because everybody here has probably mentioned something that they would like to have on the agenda, and I'd just like to see, you know, in advance, who's putting that together or?
We've captured everything that has been requested, and we're putting a notebook together that provides background information so that if any topic comes up, we would be able to discuss it based on information you would get.
Put an agenda, would you?
Yeah, just to make sure that things that we wanted to discuss are on there. They could have been left off. I know you guys are pretty efficient, but just in case, so we can see, make sure.
Right, Harry, schools.
And the sooner the better.
Do we get an update on what is on at the retreat, or do we get one anytime soon?
We could do that at the retreat also.
Okay.
We may need to stay two nights.
We can do that. All right, can we, just quickly, I just need about 60 seconds.
We move the members of council assembling closed meeting on September 11, 2012, at 6:57 PM. Permit set out of clause seven of the Freedom of Information Act, consultation will leave council freedom by staff members.